Leadership applications and applications for uh for undergrad, it's uh it's unreal in many ways. Uh but we're we're proud of them, yeah, and exciting time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Tough year for seniors, tough year for kindergarteners.
Yes, yes, and I will add all the grade levels in between. It has been, uh, yeah, uh, as we, I refer to it as the most extraordinary uh year in my professional career in education and most people have have latched on to that, it it just it is just that.
I'm going to have to borrow your word extraordinary. I've occasionally substituted other words.
I appreciate your recognizing, that's why I'm purposeful, because we we do need to keep a, you know, a semblance of a positive attitude and mindset and growth mindset. And it is just, it's extraordinary, it is. It is, and that's all I'll say. That's not all I mean, but that's all I say.
I was in a meeting this morning and um that we're talking about, because of course, you know Tacoma and other districts are announcing hybrid model, so they'll be going to, and everyone's just like, ah, because you know, you're trying to get your head wrapped around the remote learning and then that grows a whole nother um, you know, level of you know, it's 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 gonna be a bit of a challenge, I think this entire, it's it's gonna be a challenge.
The going back and forth will be particularly difficult, I think.
Right, because I know there are some parents who just will not send their students, and you know, reasonably so. Um, and there are some, I mean, so you've got those folks, and so we're gonna have to try and figure out how to accommodate, you know, um whatever that may look like, it it's, I can just, already, that's part of the now I have to answer later, it's that, you know, getting getting back together to try and figure this daunting task out.
And for staff too, to they, you know, they will have just gotten their feet under them with the remote learning and then to change. Um, I just keep telling everyone, we're all gonna be so much smarter at the end of this year, we're all learning so much.
Yeah, I agree.
It's true, that is true.
So this is streaming, right?
Yes, we are.
Probably get started. Leslie, it's five oh seven.
Are we working on the goals or strength?
Sorry, my dogs.
No worries.
Doesn't doesn't sound like a uh Yorkshire terrier.
Oh, that's my rottweiler, he sees something outside. Yeah, he interrupts a lot of meetings, I'm on mute a lot. He sees something out there.
My cat likes to rest right here on my computer.
Oh, really?
Must be warm or something, I don't know. Not very handy.
Well, I'm not receiving anything back on the text, so I tried to call, they're both going to voicemail, so I don't know. No texts, no back, so we might as well start, okay. Good evening, uh, this is our five P M virtual work session on WASDA leadership facilitation and legislative priorities planning. And we're on to one point O, and I'm calling the meeting to order. And now I'm going to turn the meeting over to uh Ms. Tricia Lubak of WASDA for two point O to start our training. Thank you for being here.
Oh, it's my pleasure, Leslie, thank you for having me. Um, so I've, um, I I have worked with Denise and Maya and Dr. Watts, um, but Leslie, it's my first time working with you. So, um, I thought I would, um, just share a little something fun with all of you. See if I can get that on my screen for you. So we were just talking a little bit about this challenging environment. So, so I'm gonna model our our opening, um, our opening activity is just to to introduce and tell how long we've been on the board, maybe what we do and what stage you might currently be in right now. So again, Tricia Lubak with WASDA, I'm the Director of Leadership Development there. Um, I've been with WASDA for about seven years and I have sixteen years of school board experience. So I have sat in your seat for a long time. Um, and I would say that I generally start out in the morning, right about at number one. And often finish with number two, and then get up and start it back, start back over again. How about you, Dr. Watts, would you like to go next?
I will, uh. I think right about now, uh, there's too much, too many, too many examples where there's a lot of hair on on his head, so I can't can't really relate to that right now. So I I have to say, you know, I start the the day, uh, number one, you know, hey, we we got this, and we have a good idea, and there are some points throughout the day where I get to a, uh, yeah, I get to an eight. Like what, really? Did that just, yeah, that just happened. So those are my two.
Great.
One and eight, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna go around on my screen, which is different than your screen. Leslie, would you like to go next?
Um, obviously, this is my first year on the board, so I'm trying to learn as much as I can. Um, been very active on many other boards and had a thirty-two-year professional career. My daughter's a teacher. Um, and my little granddaughter is on virtuous and in the second grade, so having my daughter teach my little granddaughter's been a challenge while while working in the home, so I'm glad to be here and here eager to learn.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, and then Maya's next on my screen.
Hi, I'm Maya Vengadaslam, and I have been on the board and starting my eighth year. And I have been active in the district for, since nineteen ninety-six, since my son entered Kent Elementary. And um, so, not sorry, not active on the board, but active in the district since ninety-six. Um, so I've seen a lot of changes and um glad to be here. I am, I don't know, I don't identify with any of these moods. Maybe I'm I'm two, I think. I'm staying calm, surprisingly, so I'll say two, I'll start and end with two.
Good, so we're missing your your characterization of just someone who's calm and
I like to think so.
I love it, I love it. I'm gonna add that to my um, package along with um, extra, it being an extraordinary year. Those are both inspiring comments. Leslie, I don't think you shared with us which stage you're in right now.
Uh, no, sorry, I'm trying to actually eat some dinner, I'm hungry. I I like number four, just because I feel that way a lot of the time, so, but hopefully by the end of a lot of days, um, I get to one, actually, so.
Good for you, that's great. All right, Denise.
Yeah, so um Denise Daniels, I've been on the board, this is my third year on the board. And um, I've been in the Kent District since twenty thirteen. So um, I've been in several districts, we recently moved, we moved in twenty thirteen to Kent. Um, been in probably about five other school districts in Western Washington, um, with my other children at large range, age thirty-two down to sixteen, so we've been in lots of different districts, lots of different schools. Have worked um, in different districts, worked in Renton, um, worked for a quick minute in Kent, and now I work in Auburn. Um, and I will say for me, um, you know, when I open my eyes in the morning, I'm pretty sure I'm at one, but by the time I look at my email, I'm at three. Um, and then usually if I'm not delirious, like six at the end of the day, I'm probably like nine. So it just depends on on where we are, so I had, I had a lot of these depending on what's happening, so, um, yeah.
Well, hopefully we'll all be at number one tonight and then move from there, so thank you for sharing that information about yourselves, I appreciate it. It's um, it is not an easy time to be a leader in a school district right now, it is really tough. And almost any decision you make makes half the people mad, so it's really tough. Um, and you know, I just, a- again, really encourage you to think about um, making sure that you're you're following what you believe is the best thing to do, and I know you're all working very hard um, towards that. So tonight, what we're gonna talk about is your board self-assessment. Um, did you all receive the attachments with the I know it was a very long report, my apologies for the length of that, you don't have to have had that printed out if you don't have it, that's fine. Um, hopefully you did have a chance to print out the three worksheets. Do you all have an opportunity to do that?
Yeah, I didn't print it out, but I have it up.
You know, if you didn't print it out, if you wanted just to have some um, note paper there to take some notes when we're talking, that's not a problem at all, so. Um, I know it's always challenging when we're doing these remotely, I can't just hand you packets, makes it harder. So I wanted to share with you a little bit about where we're headed today. So um, one of the reasons that we even look at uh, the board self-assessment is because there's been a lot of research over the years about um, what makes an impact on student achievement and good student outcomes. Not just achievement, so to speak, but also just good outcomes. We all know there are other outcomes besides just academic achievement that we want our students to to grasp. Um, there's been lots and lots of research around teachers, around principals, around superintendents, and it really hasn't been until about the last decade that somebody's actually looked at the board and asked the question, do boards really matter? And a lot of that uh, work started um, with the Lighthouse Studies out of Iowa, and some of you may have heard of those. The Iowa Studies are pretty famous now. Um, they started about thirty years ago and really kicked off the look at whether or not boards make any difference. Um, it's funny because uh, those of us who've been on boards for a long time know that people either say, sometimes they say both, that boards um, can cause harm to students and at the same time, boards make no difference. Now, obviously, those statements can't both be true. Um, and so what the research has really looked at over the last ten years is, do boards make a difference? And if so, how? What are the things that they do that make a positive or a negative impact on students in their system? And so there's been a great deal of research that's been done about Washington, around Washington State School Board Standards. And I'll talk about that in a minute, it's linked to this board self-assessment. Um, the the research started looking at comparing um, the responses of the board self-assessment uh, across multiple districts throughout uh, Washington. Um, all of it was anonymous data that we submitted to the researchers, um, and we've, we're in about our seventh year of doing this. Um, and then it it, they did a crosswalk with that against what we really have in terms of data for student achievement, and that's most of the student assessment data that comes out of O S P I. Um, there are a number of other states that now license our board self-assessment based on WASDA's school board standards. And they've done the same thing, so we have multi-state research now that comes out of Texas, Arizona, Idaho, Oregon, and Montana, as well as Washington. And the researchers have spent a great deal of time on connecting those dots to to answer this question, do boards really matter? And the answer that they have come up with and they can um, show it through their data is that boards do. And um, that boards, when they are addressing factors within their control, have the ability to create those environments where social injustices are overcome. And um, the um, the environment is created so that every student can achieve at high levels. And so that's great news for a board that really wants to make a difference um, for their children, because the the research shows that they can. Um, the other thing that the this um, research has shown, and this goes all the way back to the Lighthouse Studies, is that boards of high-performing districts behave differently than boards of low-performing districts. And so this is adjusting for all of the socioeconomic factors and other factors that can impact student achievement. Um, it it's been shown that the the boards of of the high-performing districts, they just do things differently. It looks different, the their board uh, meetings look different, and so that's been an important factor to look at. Um, here are some of the elements that um, low-achieving districts um, and low-performing boards have in common. Um, their board meetings, for example, tend to be less orderly, there's less time spent on student achievement, more time spent on other things that might be less important. Um, and then there's the way that they treat each other, not listening respectfully or attentively, advancing their own agenda, um, perhaps their their working relationships within the governance team, and you all are the governance team. Um, those are less positive and productive. Um, also, we see that when fewer members rely on the superintendent for um, for input or advice, doesn't mean necessarily um, adopting everything, but certainly looking to the superintendent for recommendations. Um, are there members other than the chair that are talking excessively, or are you focusing on less on policy items? And maybe things that are less um, connected to student performance. So those are some of the elements that the research has shown, with um, tho- these elements were linked to low-performing boards. Um, on the other hand, um, the research through, the multi-state research has shown that this is what's linked to high-achieving boards. So, and these are, you can see these items over on the right-hand side, they're ordered um, on the left, and on the right-hand side, these are the actual board, Washington State School Board Standards. And these are how they're ranked in terms of um, importance and um, actual um a connection with student achievement. So you can see, right at the beginning, it's communicating high standards for students through policies and actions. Treating all individuals with respect, including each other and students and staff. Fostering a culture of collaboration around a shared purpose. And again, you have this this other one that's similar to the first one, through all policies and and actions express our belief that all students can learn. The fifth one is um, is orientation of new school board members, and um, that's sharing that responsibility with the superintendent with each other. Uh, sixth is uh, supporting uh, the district and ensuring that that the curriculum is um, in place that's needed for high achievement. The next is committing to a clear and shared purpose. Honoring the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent, regularly monitoring the budget and fiscal status of the district, and basing its decisions on what's best for student success. So I think these are really helpful to look at, because um, one of the things that I've learned from uh, the work that we've done with the researchers, and have have any of you ever attended that, um, the breakout session that we've had with the researchers at WASDA's annual conference, we've done it for the last couple of years. Looks like maybe you haven't. Um, their research is fascinating, and you can tell that the researchers put this um, put this PowerPoint together, because it's all numbers and nothing pretty. Um, but it, what what they have, what they have learned on through this is that it's boardsmanship is not intuitive. It's really hard as a board member to know what will make a difference in the district and what will not, and so this data has been really helpful. Um, after tonight, I will send you a couple of articles by those researchers that um, provide some great background information. I didn't want to flood you with too much information tonight, but I thought that that would be helpful. Are there any questions or thoughts on this right now? I promise not to talk at you for the majority of the time we have together tonight. Is any of this surprising to you, or does it um, reinforce things you already knew?
Well, I do, we, are we gonna get a copy of the slideshow, uh, Tricia?
This is the extent of the slideshow, it's just five slides long and I will absolutely send it to you.
Thank you, yeah.
For sure.
And just a point of business, uh, both directors are trying to log on now, they did not realize the timeframe.
Okay. Great. So let me um, switch, I'm gonna switch gears a little bit, I talked with you about what this um, research was based on, um, which was the Washington School Board Standards, so I'm gonna jump over for a moment and um, go ahead and bring those standards up for you. I know that many of you have probably seen them before, um, and I'm gonna start a new screen share here. And here we go. So did we get one more person logged on? Or not yet?
Yes, hi, sorry, I thought we started at five thirty, I was eating my dinner, thinking I had more time, sorry.
You know what, Michelle, I just did the exact same thing.
Yeah. I'm not used to the five o'clock starts.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, and we've met before.
We have, I have um, I have not met Leah, I don't believe.
I don't think so.
Okay, Leah, I'm Tricia Lubak from WASDA, it's nice to meet you.
You too.
And Leah, how long have you been on the board?
I'm new, I just um, came on with Leslie and Michelle um, in, starting in January.
Okay, perfect. Well, we were just talking a little bit about some of the research um, behind um, school board effectiveness and and covering the idea of whether or not board service, does does board, the board work actually matter, does it make any difference? Um, and I will provide you the information that we just spent a little bit of time um, looking through. To cut to the chase, the the result of the research shows that um, that what boards do makes a lot of difference. And that there are certain behaviors that are linked to um, low-performing school districts. And there are certain behaviors among boards that are linked to high-performing school districts. And that's been borne out in some multi-state research, um, all of which is linked to Washington's school board standards.
Is that, is that, because I went to that session at WASDA on the last day, that was fascinating, that was great stuff.
Good, that that was the question I just asked actually before you joined, is whether or not anyone had attended that session.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Good, so you have a little bit of a a leg up then in terms of understanding um, what that research um, shows. So the the reason that the school board standards are so important, I'm gonna just, sorry for those of you who get dizzy while we're, while we're moving here. Um, they are organized, the the school board standards are organized around these five core principles here. Um, and I know they're probably a little small on your screen, do you all know how to make your 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 screen bigger if you need to look at something in a larger format? Everyone's good, okay, everyone's a Zoom expert now, and no one was a while ago. Um, but the five, the five core principles of the school board standards are here. And they're going to probably look familiar to uh, to you. The first one is responsible school governance. Um, communication of and commitment to high expectations for student learning. Creating conditions for district-wide, can, excuse me, creating conditions district-wide for student and staff success. Holding the district accountable for student learning and engagement of the community and education. So the reason those probably look familiar to you is that the standards are directly aligned with the board self-assessment. And so in fact, if we go down a bit and look at the first standard, which is providing responsible school governance, you'll see that for each standard, there are multiple benchmarks. So this one is conducting fair, um, excuse me, conducting board and district business in a fair, respectful and responsible manner. And then there are multiple indicators, and these indicators are actually what make up the board self-assessment. So the board self-assessment is just um, uh, directly from the standards, and it's helping you as a board member evaluate how closely you think your board is aligning with the school board standards. So does that make some sense? I know several of you have taken this, well, certainly Denise and Maya have taken the the board self-assessment before. I do find in working with boards, um, that some of them who've taken it in the past didn't realize there was that tight alignment between the standards and the board self-assessment, but that's where that comes from. So, questions about that? Be happy to answer any questions at this point. The other thing that's important, this is on our website, so if you're interested in looking at the board, um, Washington School Board Standards, um, go to Newsroom and then Publications, and you can pull down and open this up, we're just looking at a PDF, which is um, right off of the website right now. The other thing that's important, sorry for swishing past all of this, is that towards the end of these um, five standards, there's also a list of individual school board standards. And these can be really helpful for the individual to look at and think about, okay, the first standard is values and ethical behavior. So am I as an individual school director placing student needs first? Um, am I modeling high ethical standards? Um, perhaps I want to drop down and look at professional development, you know, if I'm a new school director, am I ensuring that I'm committing the time and energy necessary to be informed and competent by attending trainings and learning new things? So this can be a helpful thing for the individual school board member. It's not part of the board self-assessment, because the board self-assessment is really aimed at looking at what is the performance of the full board looking like. So, that's a little bit of background to let you know why this is important, why it even matters, why does it matter what boards do? Um, and it matters because it actually has a significant correlation to the outcomes of students in districts. So I'm gonna jump over and do a little bit of introduction about how we're going to approach this tonight. Um, that's the end of my lecture, and what I would like to do now is um, um, move more into my role as a facilitator, because the results of the board self-assessment are really only helpful if you have some time to talk about them. The board self-assessment is not for scoring, or for saying, we do a great job, we're wonderful, or, oh, what an awful board you are for getting such low scores. The value in the board self-assessment is in having the opportunity to unpack the results together and talk about what they mean. Um, every board has its own self-measurement, every person has their own self-measurement. And you know, what might rate a four in one person's book might rate a two in another person, so part of that is, you know, a a little bit of calibration. Um, so I wanna give you the chance to kind of understand um, where, how that work, how that's gonna work out tonight. So, before Michelle and Leah jumped on, I had just asked the group whether or not you had a chance to print out your um, three worksheets, they look like this, the first one looks like this. Okay, I see Michelle has it. Leah, did you have a chance to print that out? And you are muted.
I don't have a printer.
Okay, that's not a problem, I can show it on the screen, and if you want to just have some um, note paper nearby, that'll be fine. Perfect, you are ready to go. So here's the way we're gonna approach this tonight, we're gonna spend the majority of the next hour and a half really focused around um, three different questions. And um, what those questions are going to be is, we're gonna have you take a little bit of time to look at the data. So in addition to the worksheets that I sent you, I also sent you the report, your report, which looks like this. Are you all seeing the aggregate data on your screen right now? In front of me, okay. So this is long, this is forty-two pages long. Um, it's impossible really for you to go through all of it and try to make meaning, and so that's the purpose of tonight, is to really look at it together. Think about what it means and um, what actions or um, commitments you might make based on what you um, learned from it together tonight. So, we're going to approach it in a couple of different ways. Um, the first way, and you can see this on your um, worksheet, and I'll pull the worksheet up once you all start working, so that you can see what the questions are. But we're gonna start by looking at areas where you all identified that as a board, you have, you have areas of strength. So again, nobody else has judged you on this or ra- rated you on this, th- this is your own information that you're talking about tonight. Um, we, there are, you'll see that there were four out of five um, board members who responded to this. We didn't get a fifth response, and that's okay. Um, it it often happens that we have one board member who's not able to complete it, but just have that information and know that as we go into it. So the first area, what we're, what we're going to do is, we're going to pair you up, so I'm gonna send you into breakout rooms in pairs. And you're going to do that three different times, and you'll be with a different partner each time. I'm gonna just give you some time to talk a little bit about what you see in the survey. So in addition to this survey, you all, or excuse me, to this report, you also received what was called a board self-assessment survey score ranking, it looks like this. Does that look somewhat familiar? This will be helpful to you too, and I'll tell you how to use it. And if you don't have a printer, you can bring these up on your screen. Um, and I know that's kind of a lot to juggle, I probably would have sent these to you if we'd had a little bit more lead time. But we'll, we'll do the best we can, and if you can't have access to all of them at once, that's okay. In your pair groups, you could even have one person looking at the report and one person looking at the ranking survey, that's fine too. When you go into your first breakout group, um, you're going to cover the items that are on the first page of the worksheet. And I'm gonna read this out to you, this is really looking at what are And I'm going to read this out to you. This is really looking at what are your areas of strength. So I want you to talk a little bit about, um, where are the questions where you rated yourself most highly? Uh, do you see any patterns from those? Um, are they clustered mainly within, within one or two standards? Maybe there are some common themes among the questions. And there's a really easy way, um, to figure out which ones you, um, rated yourselves most highly on. And that's to look at the survey score ranking. So if you look at this, when you're in your breakout sessions, I'll pull it up on my screen. I neglected to pull it up, but I want you to be able to take a look at it. If you look at this document, you'll see over in the left-hand column that some of them, the averages are in green. And that is because these are all ranked according to the highest scores that you gave yourselves per question, all the way down to the end. And those on the very last page actually have a red, the number is in red. And those are the areas where you rated yourself lowest. Trust me, with forty-two questions or seventy-two questions actually, it's a lot easier to, um, figure out how the ranking goes with this ranking list. So again, you'll want to take a look at those that are in green here and ask yourself the question about, you know, are there patterns here? Are they perhaps, um, follow, falling within one standard? Um, what are the, what are the groupings that you see? Are there some common themes? And then in the second column, the question is, I'd really like you to spend some time thinking about, why do you think that this is a strength of your board? Why does your board view this as a strength? And how can your board remain strong and continue to improve in this area? Um, one of the downfalls of, um, survey information, um, or, or rating information, um, if you're anything like me, you take a look at an evaluation and you look at the worst things that were said about you and focus on those and agonize on those. But really, it's very important for board superintendent teams to take a look at their strengths. Because those are the things you want to capitalize on and make sure that you're, you're, you don't let those go. You want to build off of those strengths and think about how to do that. So we're going to go do that in a moment. Um, the second round, we'll come back. I'm going to have each of your groups, um, share out what you talked about. Um, and then we'll go back into another set of breakout rooms. You'll have a different partner. And then we're going to look at, um, the areas where you rated yourself the lowest. Same thing. We'll come back, have a little bit of time to share out what you learned, talk with each other a little bit. And then the third round is going to be, um, looking at those areas where there's a great deal of difference between the responses. We call that the rainbow round. And that's because those are the ones that show up as a big rainbow in the, um, responses they have. Well, sort of like what you see in front of you right now. Um, if you have a single response that has all of those colors in it, that's a rainbow. And it means that it, you have a real vast, um, expanse between different responses. And so we'll talk about that one as well. Before we do that, I want to go over this aggregate, aggregate data for a moment. Just to help you understand what this is, and you probably do know, your board has actually taken this survey every year for the last four years. And that's fantastic. It gives you some great trending data. So you can see it was taken in twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Actually, that should be twenty. Um, that one, that has the wrong data on it, I think.
Is that ours, Tricia? Because it looks different than the one I'm looking at.
Does it?
I'm looking at the one. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. Because the one I have has twenty twenty on it.
Okay, you know what then? I brought up the wrong one on the screen. I'm glad to see that. So I need to pull up the one that has twenty twenty.
Okay.
I will do that when you all go out to your breakout rooms. See, I can get my, I can get things together when you all are, um, off working. So that's great. Thank you for letting me know. Um, so what you'll want to do too during your first one is spend a little bit of time looking at this aggregate data, um, as well. We'll probably come back and take a look at this one at the end. I was going to have you respond to it right now, but since I don't have the correct one up on my screen, I don't want to do that. We need to have the right data for you to look at.
But then that also means we have at least five years of data. Because that has twenty sixteen, and when they were talking in that session, that once you have five years of data, then they can, the, you know, those researchers could, you know, potentially help us look at things because they, they view that and then they watch board meetings and they have a whole list of things they do.
Yeah, you can do a lot with this data. The interesting thing to think about is that the team doesn't remain the same. So team members change, board members. So individual board members change, and every time an individual changes, that changes the, the complexion of the board. It's a new team every time you have a new board member. And so you have three new board members. It's a completely new team. And, um, while that's true, you have to consider that over time, it's the board. Whoever the board happens to be in any given year that makes the difference over time.
Right.
So while it's, it's great if a single, you know, if a current board or, um, a one, one-year's board is making, um, great strides and doing good things, it has to happen over time to make a difference for students who are in the district. So it really, it really means we're all in it for the long haul. So any questions at this point? Okay, so I am going to, um, pull up the, let's see if I have those questions up for you. I'm going to try to bring up that worksheet. Um, do you all have the worksheet accessible to you that has the questions?
Oh, yeah.
So Leslie, I, I emailed it to you. It's, um, if you, your partner can read them. So if you don't have them in front of you, um, again, what we're looking at right now is we're looking at areas of strength. So you're looking at those in the, in the column on the front of the ranking report. If you want to go into the report itself and pull up and look at specifically what the, um, ratings were, you can do that. This first one's pretty easy. We start with an easy one because these are the, these are the areas where you said that you feel that you are a strong board and you're, you're, you're comfortable with these areas where you're working. So again, think about, what do you see here? What are the commonalities? Um, why do you think this is a strength? And why do you think that your board, um, how could your board continue to capitalize on these? So I am going to create one new breakout room since we have, um, Leah and Michelle here. And, um, I am going to, I'm going to send you out for about, um, eight minutes to talk. I may pop in and out of the breakout session, the breakout rooms a little bit. Um, I'm just in there to make sure everything's going okay and you don't have any questions. I'll probably turn my camera off so that you can kind of pretend I'm not there. Just ignore me. Unless you have a question. Um, you also can, um, can use the chat feature to, um, let me know if you have a, a question or a problem. But I'll pop in to make sure that everybody's doing okay. Any questions before I send you out to your rooms? Everyone's good to go? Okay, so I will send you out right now. It's always fun watching everybody pop back up. It's an interesting experience, isn't it? Okay, I got my things together while you were off in your breakout rooms. And so you should see in front of you the, the worksheet about strengths right now? Is that what you're all seeing?
Yes.
Perfect. So let's see, we're going to, what I'd like you to do is, um, each, just give you a couple of minutes to share out. We're going to go kind of in one round robin, um, with, um, each of your groups. And then if there's some additional conversation you want to have and we want to come back and touch on things again, we can do that. So let me see, let me bring up, do you recall if you were in the first breakout room?
Yeah, I was.
Okay.
Leslie and I were.
Yes.
Okay, so Denise and Leslie, can you share with the group what your conversation was about? What, what, what were your, um, items that you wrote down and, and talked about?
Well, we saw, uh, several of them that were our highest rating. Um, and Denise, I don't have that number in front of me, so I.
It's okay. So what we looked at is we looked at our areas that were high, our highest ratings and we found that, um, most of our, um, areas of strength circled, centered around standards two and three. And how, um, both of those had to do with student expectations and student, um, and student success and conditions around district-wide, creating those opportunities. So that was kind of where, what we noticed where the majority of our, of our strength was.
Did you have a chance to think a little bit about how you might capitalize on that as one of your strengths as a board?
Um, I, I don't know that we got that far. I was kind of, it was kind of hard. I was typing the questions in the chat and trying to share my screen so she could, so I don't think we got that far. But I was writing down, I think, um, what I wrote was, I think that that is a common theme for our board that we do, um, I believe all of us really have, believe in high expectations for all of our students and creating those conditions so they can be successful. I think that's something that we, um, continue to, um, it's important to all of us and that's, that's something a priority for all of us.
Okay. Great. Okay, sounds good. Thank you for sharing. How about, um, breakout room two? So that was Selma and.
Yes.
And who else?
And Director Vengadossalat Maya.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, wonderful.
So Maya, you're, you're muted. Oh, you go ahead, ahead.
Okay, um, so we also noticed standard three and four, oh, sorry, three and I think you said two, not quite sure, yes. But we agree, the creating conditions district wide for student and staff success seemed to be up on top of the list. An interesting thing we saw was the standard number one pop up on top. We're, we're providing responsible school district governance by delegating authority to the superintendent to manage district operations and implement policy. And so that was sort of a question mark, you know? It looks like a strength, but is it in practice? You know, it's a question that we need to kind of define our roles and responsibilities. So I kind of questioned that one. But in terms of strengths and we saw those creating the conditions, but we also saw number four, holding the school district accountable for meeting student learning experiences as some of the top priorities. So standard four also popped up.
And so Maya, when you mentioned that the item around appropriate delegation to the superintendent, let me see if I, I want to just delve down into that a little bit more and see if I can understand what you might have been noticing perhaps. And if that isn't what you noticed, let me know. But sometimes there can be, there can be different beliefs around what the appropriate role is for a school board member. As well as, you know, delegation, how much delegation is the right amount? Do you, I don't know if you had a chance to discuss whether or not that might be an area where individual board members on your board might have differences of opinion on what that role is?
Yeah, I think we've discussed it, but we haven't delved into that. I mean, we've had, you know, with WASD, that 50,000 foot level of discussion that I don't feel like we have with the new board. And not to say that, I just, I'm just saying that is to be interesting that it's up on top.
Sure.
And I wonder if it's because we feel it should be a, you know, a priority or if it is a priority. So a question for some of these, I think it would be important to discuss with the superintendent. Like, do you feel like we're delegating authority to the superintendent? Or are we going off on our own, making decisions? So it's just a question.
Sure.
No, if I may, I appreciate that line of, you know, of thinking. And so when Maya and I were discussing that, you know, you, you brought that question to me and just as a, as a conversation. I wonder what, what would you say or what would you think if we were to have that conversation in a BSGT or Board Superintendent Governance Team discussion? And I, I, I would say that's something that we all need to, I think, continue. Today's discussion is a step in the right direction. The more, like anything else, any relationship, anytime we practice communication more and more effective communication, we tend to get better, right? So what I noted, and similar to what Vice President Daniels and President Hamada's team noticed is that actually the first four questions, the highest scores, the standards that were represented, three out of four times was a standard three. Setting conditions. And so, so how might we use this as a strength analysis, right? The, how do we set the condition? What are the conditions? And then part of our conversation Maya and I had is, is do we have a shared understanding of what those conditions are based on this strength? Because if it's a strength, how do we benefit, right? How we benefit greater from that strength? And so that, those are questions that I would want us to ponder and certainly seek your guidance on how we might move forward with that, that strength-based leadership in mind.
Sure. And Tricia, though, one last thing is we did talk about, it wasn't just the three new board members that came on board in January, but we've had, in the past four years, we've had a lot of changes. You know, two new board members came in, two new left, two of the board members left. So we've had a lot of changes in between as well.
Yeah. And that churn makes it really hard to have sustained leadership. You know, you kind of start all over again when you have a new group and it takes time to, it takes time to learn how to work together as a board, as well as taking time to understand what your role is as a board member and, and wrap your head around all the many, many responsibilities.
Well, and I might want to add that, and I'm sure this doesn't probably play directly into board governance, but it really does is I'm finding a lack in our community of their definition of what a board can, can do and what a board superintendent can do, their duties. And then they're pushing that on individual board directors and they don't understand. I mean, I think our community needs a little bit of an education on how our district works. I mean, I don't know if anybody else is finding that, but I'm continually saying to myself, this is my role through policy. This is Dr. Watts, and it sounds like I'm just being redundant, but I'm trying to, when I'm answering people's emails or stuff, I'm trying to educate them and maybe wrongly of what my part is and what the superintendent and their staff's part is. But I just think there's a, a real disconnect in that in a lot of people in our community, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that too, you know, we all come into this role with our different experience. And I think that those, you know, I think that there should be a little bit of, I think it is worth the conversation, Leslie, around the clarity around exactly what, because I also noticed that when it said honoring the superintendent roles and responsibilities, that was in a green area too. But I think there's oftentimes confusion as to what that looks like. And I think that, you know, exactly, you know, does this look like a traditional supervisor role versus a, you know, a support governance type role? And I think that clarity there would be really helpful because I think there's expectations that some people have that aren't, that are different than the, than what's the reality of a superintendent board relationship, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you, you both brought up an excellent point. There, the expectations among the community of what they expect board members to be able to do and the reality of what's appropriate in your governance role can be entirely different. And that also creates a problem when you have new board members who, in many cases, have campaigned on those changes. I'll just bring myself up as an example. I'll throw myself under the bus here. 16 years ago, when I ran for the school board, I knew what I wanted to get in there and change. And then I joined the board. And then I, you know, over time, you start realizing what your role is and what's appropriate. The other thing is you, you now are, you know, on the inside baseball track. You realize, oh gosh, there are some other really smart people who've worked at this a lot longer than I have. And the, and their experiences are important and the experiences of new board members are important too. So just, you know, I think having that understanding amongst yourselves that, and it's, it takes a lot of self-control to be able to say to a community member, I hear you. I understand your concern. Let me explain to you why that isn't my role as a board member to, to fix that for you. However, I will give you some recommendations about how you could start fixing that or addressing that problem yourself. It might be talking with the coach, talking with the teacher, talking with the superintendent, joining a committee. You know, whatever that is, but really, I think it, it sounds like it would help, particularly with a lot of new board members on your, on your team, to talk about what's the appropriate role of the board? And how can you help parents or community members or students when they're frustrated about something that isn't your role? Because that's, you, you want to help everyone. And the fact of the matter is you can push, you can, you can steer them in the right direction, but you can't solve their problems all the time. So thank you. That, those were really important comments there. I want to go over to the last group. That was Michelle and Leah, I think.
Yep. Okay. So we also noticed the same thing, standards two and three. There were five, on the first page, there were five items from number three, five from number two, two from standard one, one from standard four and one from standard five. But when you really dig into it and you're looking at what the standards are, like the first one, it's like, have a long-term facilities plan in place for construction and maintenance. And, you know, if you look at all the ones, regular monitor the budget and fiscal status of the district, have an established course of study for students, communicate an expectation that all classrooms will implement effective instructional practices and keep the community informed about the district's financial status. A lot of that is, is, we had discussion and Leah, please jump in if I misrepresent at all. That, you know, a lot of those things are just standard operating procedure in the district and they've been clearly established. And so it's just, you know, this is what's on the calendar, so we always have that. So that, again, was an interesting thing that we noticed that a lot of those things are just already established. And there are very specific protocols. And, you know, that's, you know, something that we just noticed in that, that those things already well-established specifics protocols. And it's just, we know that that's getting done. And then if you dig into number two a little bit, you know, about students and things like that, review student achievement regularly. Again, you know, it's, it's all stuff that's established through policies and things like that. So it's, it's not as much the things that the board, that the board has, you know, we, it's, it's more about the information we receive than it is about the, the things we do. If, if you look at all those specific items that kind of come up on that first page.
Leah, did you want to jump in there?
Oh, yeah. And we were talking at the end too, we realized we got kicked out. Not kicked out, but no, we had to go back to you guys. But I was also bringing up the point that, you know, at, at least for on, you know, being transparent with our budget, I know that there had been some issues around that. And that, you know, I think it's a good thing that that is scored highly because, you know, all the different groups that have been put in place by, you know, by the community asking, you know? And the financial team that they have right now, I don't know what the financial team was like before, but I definitely think that that's a super positive thing. And I don't necessarily think that that might have been in place in the years before.
It was a request of the board. That was a request of the board, yeah.
I think you, you might have uncovered a really interesting connection between the fact that you're mentioning some of the areas where you have a lot of strength are those that are on your calendar, ones that are, you know, traditionally brought up. It, it's clear that there's been some attention paid to putting together a calendar and a schedule of covering topics that are important, like looking at the budget. Your curriculum was right up there, having, you know, strong curriculum in place and established course of study, publicly recognizing the efforts of schools. So I, I think you uncovered that fact that those things that you have calendar and that you have established as a board, as strong protocols for a governance team, those are the areas where you are seeing yourself having strength. So those could be, that may be part of the answer when we take a moment in a few, few minutes here to take a look at some areas where you gave yourselves lower rankings and think about, do we have an established process or protocol for that? Might that be an area where we could improve ourselves by doing that? Well, I'll let you, I'll let you decide that whether you take, once you take a look at them. So just looking at the time, I want to make sure that we give plenty of time on for looking at all of the elements. So I am going to move you over, stop sharing for a moment because my computer has decided to not play nicely with me. Let's see if I can try again. So we're going to go ahead and take a look at the items that are in, on the sheet that is in red. And it might, it is deciding not to play nicely with me today. That's because I found it for you and now it's not going to let me show it to you, so.
Is the opportunity for growth?
It is, yes. So if you have that one that, that starts in red, let me read you the questions here. So the opportunities for growth. I want you to really think about, as you look at the areas where you gave yourselves lower rankings, do you, again, do you see some patterns there? Are there patterns? Do you, are they clustered among one or two standards? What are some common themes among the areas where you gave yourselves lower rankings? And then, of course, the second part of that would be, how can the board use these as opportunities for growth? To grow and improve as a board? So, and if it would be helpful for you, I can put those questions. Do, do most of you have those questions in front of you? Looks like maybe you do. Okay. So I'm going to mix you up. You're going to be in different groupings and you will have seven minutes this time. And we'll come back and we'll do the same thing again. So any questions before I send you off into space? Okay, here we go then. Maybe we will. I seem to be having some computer problems here. I think maybe I've locked it up. So let's see if I can get it. Um, let's see. It's like being a teacher in front of a bunch of high school students and suddenly your technology's not working, right?
Oh, I think we're a lot nicer.
You are a lot nicer. That's why I'm not a high school teacher, for sure, so.
I sat in on third grade. They start doing show and tell. They hold things up to the, to each other when they're in third grade.
Like, really, mom? You're just so technology challenged. Oh, my God, you know? So that's what, that's things.
They'll tell you, tell you the truth.
They do, yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm assuming that Pam is still there. Pam, I am having difficulty accessing the breakout rooms right now.
I'm frozen.
You're frozen.
You're totally frozen too. I thought maybe if you make me the host again and then I'll make you the host back, maybe that will unlock you.
I don't think I can, I don't think I can even make you, make you the host because I can't do anything right now. Hmm. So you know what?
Casey is the host right now.
He's making you the, or he's the host. He'll fix it, I think.
Okay, sorry about that.
So let's see. Okay, now you're the host again. Are you able to access?
I'm not. So here's what I would request, if you don't mind. I'm going to log out and log back in while everyone else is in the breakout rooms. Are you comfortable putting people into breakout rooms if I tell you the groupings?
Sure.
Okay, so the next combinations that I have are in, it doesn't matter which breakout room they're in. But next groupings would be Leah and Denise.
Okay.
Leslie and Maya.
Okay.
Calvin and Michelle.
Okay, give me just a minute, everyone, and I'll get you moved.
And I'm going to log all the way out and log back in and maybe I'll be fixed when I get back. And there, and those breakout rooms, those are for seven minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it.
Take me just a minute to move you guys. Sorry, hang on just a second.
You're doing great.
Thank you.
No, I mean, I wouldn't be able to do this. You're doing great. I admire you for jumping in and doing that.
Thank you. Okay, Leah and Denise, you are ready to go. And let's see. Okay. Leslie, Maya, Leah, Denise. Okay, here you go.
All right. Yeah.
And you're all back.
And you're back and you're not frozen.
I'm not. Yes, I was glad to be able to find my way back thanks to Pam's quick work. So, okay, uh, let's see. Is there a group that would like to start this time? We're again talking about those opportunities for growth.
We went one of our.
We're in room one, so I don't know if Leslie, if you'd like to lead.
Maya, that was you?
Yes, room one was us. Leslie and I.
Well, we had some good discussions. We kind of thought we were all across the board there on some of the stuff. And we came to a conclusion that maybe some of that was not, I mean, that some of our final evaluations might have been by personal reflections. And Maya came up with a good question on one of those. Why don't you talk about the evaluation of the district?
Yeah, um, so we, we, as Leslie said, we were kind of confused why we had standard three up on top and standard three at the bottom. So we'd like to see sort of comparison of what was, I haven't done that analysis of why three was up on top and then three's at the bottom. But we looked at one of the lowest ones. It said, provide for evaluation of district operations to ensure there's an efficient and effective learning environment. So there's always been a question, you know, when the board evaluates the superintendent, are we evaluating the individual or are we evaluating the district? And, you know, what I've always been told, you know, on trainings is we're evaluating the district and not an individual. And so when we start getting into those personal types of, you know, conversations about what a superintendent does that we don't like, you know, then you have to kind of question, are we looking at the big picture or are we personalizing this? So I would like some clarification on what that means, evaluation of district operations. Should we be doing something separate than the evaluation of the superintendent? To kind of see, you know, how the district as a whole is performing.
It's a really good question and it does speak to the difference between the two main types of superintendent evaluations, one of which is standards-based and one of which is outcomes-based. And you know, you ultimately, you, you evaluate the superintendent on what the outcome of the district is. On, on the other hand, you certainly want a superintendent that aligns with high standards. And so it's, that's, that's, you've, you've elegantly isolated that that's one of the challenges. And it looks like, you know, potentially within your own board, you might have some differences of opinion on that. Would be a, a good area for, for further conversation for all of you.
Good point. Forgot about that. Standards versus outcome.
Yeah, it's a real, it's a real challenge to figure out, you know, which, which one of, and there, there are great arguments for both of them.
Yeah, and we did say communication with the community, improving on that is a great opportunity for us. More sort of collaborative, not so much board meetings, which we have plenty, but more one-on-one. Go ahead, Leslie, sorry. Cut you off.
I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm just curious. Because I always ask the question that's not there is, is there an evaluation of standards and outcomes that could be a combination?
Absolutely. And so I'll tell you, you know, within a, a number of years ago, Wassa and Wasda worked together on five different pilots for superintendent evaluations. And they actually piloted them. Do you remember whether Kent, was Kent part of the pilot project for any of those? I could look it up. I don't recall.
You remember the year?
It was six or seven years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Prior to mine.
Yeah, I don't recall. It would have even been eight years ago.
Yeah, we've always struggled with evaluation.
You are not alone. It's a really common thing to struggle with. It's, it's very, it's very challenging and everyone approaches it differently. With just the short story around the, the superintendent evaluation pilots, there were five that were originally brought out that were all essentially research-based. Those were tested around the state and two rose to the top as being those that they felt were the, the best researched, had, had the best outcomes and were, I put it in quotes, easiest for everyone to do, easy being a relative term here. And those, those two that rose to the top were the standards-based and the outcomes-based. I've worked with a lot of districts that have designed their own combination of those. The challenge is to make sure that you don't just combine all of the elements of both into, in, into one giant monster of a superintendent evaluation format. That's because it needs to be doable for the board. It needs to be doable by the superintendent. The, the community needs to be able to understand it and it really has to focus on, in on the things that you believe are the must haves in the district. A lot of districts will even create their own that's aligned with their strategic plan, which also makes a lot of sense. If the strategic plan is the work of the district, it should also be the work of the board and the superintendent.
And you, when, when you're saying that, and again, I'm new to this board governance.
No, no question's a dumb one.
And I'll just jump in and drown like I always do.
No, you're fine.
Too old to worry about that. How, seemingly supposedly we are representatives of our community or, or areas of districts. And we're supposed to not just have our own opinions, but be listening to our community. Is it important to engage the community on how we're building those standards and how they'd like to see it? Or is that even possible with so many varied opinions out there?
Well, you, you partly started to answer your own question. Is it, is it advisable? Absolutely. Is it doable? It's hard. But there, there are ways certainly to, you know, to, to look into what your, your community's expectations are for sure. So I think that this is definitely a topic that remains on the, you know, opportunities for growth for you as a board. And so I've, I've duly noted that on my notes that I'm going to be providing back to you. And I think I wanted just to make sure we get to the last item. And maybe the next group will be touching on the same item. Let's go to breakout room two if we could.
That was ours. And I counted the, I did the same thing I did with the first one. I counted the 15, the bottom 15. So there were three in four, five in area one, two in area five, four in area three, one in area two. So I noticed the same thing as group one that, that there were a lot, a preponderance. We were high and low in area three. And if you look at the specifics in that area, group one, which had just one more, you know, it talks about things that have, I know I personally have struggled with and have, you know, been a thing, orientation, that there's an orientation, you know, follow design process for gathering input, making critical decisions, collaboration, goal setting, things like that. And, you know, kind of when my, where my brain went to is some of this stuff is just, it's not on the calendar, you know? And so we still, you know, we have, I know that President Hamad has been asking since early August, you know, to work on goals and it's September 15th. And we haven't got our goals set, you know, we haven't even started our goal work. We started our protocol guidelines in February, February 1st to be exact, and we never finished. So, so it's, the results were not surprising to me. And the superintendent talked about technical change versus adaptive change, you know? And, you know, adaptive change requires us to, you know, get, get, do the hard work and get our hands dirty. But again, it's like just on the practical matter, it's, might not be the stuff that's the most fun. And it might not be the easiest thing to do, but some of these hard discussions and hard decisions, if they're on the calendar, we'll do them, you know? So from a very purely practical standpoint. So I will let Dr. Watts add anything that he wants to, but, you know, I mean, a lot of the things in number one, I'm not surprised because they're the things that I've struggled with and been frustrated with.
So, so thank you, Director Benjira. I, again, as I said in our breakout, what you've just described is aligned to what I've heard you share previously. And, and certainly it's not surprising. And the reason why, so I'll, I'll share a little bit more about what I meant by technical versus adaptive. A lot of the, so I was kind of juxtaposing the strengths and the areas where we needed great, greater improvement. The areas where we had the, the greater, our greater strengths seem to be the areas where we, you know, we, we're really grounded in technical change, that, that simple, not easy. So there might've been a few steps that we needed to follow to get that done. And it, and it was not, not, not easy per se, but it was simple to, to complete. Adaptive, and what I mean by adaptive is, is the, the challenges that are associated with the work. That there might be a higher degree of learning before we have, we get a sense of, of what it is that we're doing and, and how we're doing this. And so it's not surprising, something like what we've just described, you know, the learning. Some examples of, of, that involve complex conversations between us that may be more uncomfortable than just doing stuff, right? So I, I've said this, you know, not just in this team, but any team, that's, that's the harder work. It's also the most important work if we're going to continue this cadence and make sure that we're more effective as a team. So it's not surprising, you know, and I look at this as, this is an opportunity for us to see where we are now. Not to, to point fingers or to say we're, we're not, not, you know, successful. It is to say. It is to say, we may presently struggle in an area, but we now know exactly where we are. And that should get us closer to what are the steps that we need to to take in order to move us going forward. That's what these BSGT sessions should be after after today's session and ongoing.
Great. I think you identified some important elements there. And, you know, the other reality of this year. This is, as we opened up tonight, a remarkable year, a year unlike any of us have ever had. And I think one of the things we have to acknowledge is to give each other grace and give ourselves grace. And take a look at that calendar. I'm a huge proponent of calendars, board board superintendent calendars that guide the district, that guide the work. But I have to tell you, this year, calendars have a different meaning this year. And so, you know, what you all may really want to do is is sit down and really think carefully together about what are the elements that will enable our board superintendent team to do the absolute best that we can for our students and for our community and for our staff this year. Because it's going to look different this year than it looked last year or there or hopefully than it's going to look next year. So I I'm encouraging boards and super superintendent teams to really have that discussion. You know, you're you've got to focus on in on the things right now that make the biggest difference. And that might mean letting a couple of things go, but you should decide what those things are that you're going to let go together upfront, not just let them happen. That will be the most important. Let me go to group number three.
Oh, we talked about a lot of the similar things that group one and two talked about too. Communication with the staff in the community, accountability for the board, as having clear roles and responsibilities. And then I think too, you know, the fact that there's three of us coming onto the board that's new this year. You know, and two, two of us who know what they're doing and three of us who don't, I think that makes a big impact as well. And just the, you know, cadence of us working together and getting to know each other and being comfortable in our roles and, you know, with each other plays a big part into that also.
Yeah, I think also where I noticed, because I too was curious about three showing up at the top. But what I did notice is that most of the areas where it showed up involved processes. Processes and evaluations. At the top of, you know, that when when we, in the green areas, it really talked about what was concrete, right? What are things that were already in place as far as like, you know, there were just more plans that, you know, monitoring, study, all of these things that are established. But I think some of these things were, you know, a lot of it has process and evaluation and accountability. And I think that, like Leah mentioned, I think there, I think a clarity of, you know, roles and responsibilities and and, you know, areas of of impact really would probably be helpful in in this. Because it talks about coherence, right, and what that looks like. And even, you know, just thinking about the conversation Leah and I talked about when they had mentioned the, you know, fiscal recovery task force. And just the ideas of where those things may have come from, which, you know, not understanding what the board has done or, you know, what what are some of the things that the board has in place already and how those things happened and how we got here, I think would probably be really helpful to know. But I agree, like you said, this is a very, this year has been very different and we've had to put everything, I think, a lot of expectations to the side. And I think that's part of the challenge is there were expectations, you know, that folks come in with and, you know, and and, you know, wanting things and and the reality of, you know, the situation that we're in, those things have had to be put to the side. And so, you know, it's a little frustrating. So I totally agree with that and I've seen that as well.
It is frustrating and it's very similar to what we're asking teachers to do right now, which is you can't teach kids everything this year that you want to teach them. So identify those most important standards. Really focus on those things that are the most important building blocks for students this year. And, you know, you need to give yourselves that same focus. And again, also the same grace to say, we can't do everything and if we try, we probably will do nothing. And so can we really focus in on those things that will make the biggest difference to help us to be the most successful this year? It's hard. It's hard to let go of things we think are important. Welcome to the everyday life of a teacher, right?
Yeah, but I think that's important, what you said too, because it is focusing on what will make our students successful. And 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 that is, that's the key, right? It's it's not necessarily at this point what will make everyone else happy, right? It's at this point, we have to really focus on what is going to make our students successful. And so I think that's keeping that at the forefront, I think, is important too.
Yeah, I do think when we're talking about calendaring and things like that, I think one of the things that we underestimate or have expectations is that when you come on board as the president, the president takes on a whole lot of responsibilities. Not just, you know, not just govern from the dais. And so there are expectations that, you know, we're going to lead with, you know, dates and times and organizing the entire board. And so, you know, if that's not something that is an expectation coming on, then that's also problematic. So there's a question of where does our responsibility begin and where does it end? You know, as a president and as the other board members too, how do we, who leads, you know, the whole charge of, you know, gathering calendaring items and those kinds of things? So there's that. And so I always struggle with the whole orientation thing. How much of it can you really be taught versus come in ingrained with, you know, the initiatives that we need to charge forward with? So I guess at some point I'd like a discussion on that because I think we struggle with the fact, you know, what Director Benjira says, you know, we should have talked about board goals in August, early August. We started and we still haven't. And I wonder, is that not our responsibility as a board to make that happen? Is that the responsibility of the superintendent to make that happen? And where does our responsibility start and end? You know, I really would like a discussion on that.
Right. And and for that one, I know that I saw that President Hamada in on August eighth, because I was just cleaning up my emails today. She first asked about, you know, setting, getting it on the calendar for us to talk about that. So, you know, I feel like she did take the lead on that, you know. And so it's it's been there since for quite a while. So, you know, it's just and and just personally for orientation, I have a, I have a whole manual that every time I learn something new, I put it in there so I can help a new board colleague. For instance, I learned something new at our work session on Saturday when you said that if there was something really important that you wanted the superintendent to look at, that you would forward it to Karen Holly or right now Pam Holly doing double duty. Thank you, Pam. So I never knew that. In eight months, I never knew that that was something that was established and that was done. So I put that in my little spreadsheet of things that if a new board director came on board, that I could share, you know, things that I've learned by happenstance or after a long time. So I want to be proactive and I want to help people just know those, it's some of it is just that simple procedural thing, you know, those things like that.
Yeah, and it it there's there's a dual responsibility as a new school board member. The the member itself, you're talking about some of the things you're doing right now to help educate yourself, Michelle, and that's that makes a lot of sense. And again, it's 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 a challenging year to try to get people oriented. I will send you the link to two new board bootcamps that are coming up at the end of this month. And then we also have a board bootcamp coming up in November. So those are some great opportunities for you as well as some funding trainings too. So, yeah, lots of challenges there. So I want to give you time to tackle your last topic. And this is the rainbow round. Congratulations. It sounds so magical, doesn't it? Also, before I forget it, I I also wanted to mention, you'll notice on this survey, there are, when you're looking at the colors, there are a number of areas that have the color black in them, which which means I don't know. There's absolutely nothing wrong with having your survey come back with a bunch of I don't knows, especially when you have three new board members. How that can be helpful to you is to take a look at where those are and try to tackle some of those. If there's, you know, an area where there's a lot of I don't know responses, you can look at that and say, oh, that's an area where perhaps our board, particularly our new board members, need a little bit of information. Oftentimes, they have to do with, do we have a policy that? And as a new board member, of course, you're not going to know most of that. So that can be a good blueprint.
Just quickly, before you move on, it just, Dr. Watts and I have had this conversation. And just be in case anybody's tuning in to watch this, that I feel, you know, overall arching structure of school boards and the education of what the time commitment in the education level, perhaps in a district this size needs to be, you know, to to start to think to run for these positions. I think I don't think it's a, I don't think our community has a good handle on what what how, I mean, we want to have citizens per se bored, but I mean, the time commitment, the in-depth knowledge in several areas that we have to have to be board directors. I don't think that message has gotten out statewide very well. I mean, and I'm, I just want to throw that out for anybody that's listening that, you know, this is not a walk in the park. And and we do want to have everybody, you know, represented from different areas and stuff. But I do think there's some essentials that you need to know walking into this in a in a huge district like this, that it, you have to be prepared for the job too. In some areas with all the technology, I've been learning as I've gone and I felt totally lost on a lot of it. But I'm trying to learn. So there there you go.
You're absolutely right. It is an incredibly difficult job and incredibly time-consuming from people who've been elected but aren't paid for the most part and usually are working another full-time job. And some of you are taking care of kids at home right now too, or difficult pets. So it, yeah, absolutely. It's it's very difficult and takes a lot of time. Would you like us to go into the last one or do you want to, we have about thirteen minutes left. I could give you about five or six minutes to cover the last topic if you'd like.
What would probably help me if we just have a short amount of time is which of these standards, when you look at this sheet that now is sort of showing, would you ask, would you want us to focus on?
Well, so that isn't my, that that isn't my question to answer. That would be your question as a as a board superintendent team to answer. You did miss the the opening. I did provide some some of that research. You caught the tail end of it. Some of the research that our researchers have shown really does focus in on boards that have hot that govern high achieving districts, have certain behaviors that are quite different than boards that govern low achieving districts.
I went to that session at Wasda. We talked about that. Yeah. So, yeah, it's all about community a lot, this community and and getting at their input and things like that. That's one of the big.
Some of it, some of it really relates a lot to how the board superintendent governance team works together too. If when there is chaos in the boardroom, that is an easy way for a researcher who's watching a board meeting to identify that that's likely to be a low achieving district. Yeah, if the adults at the top aren't working together as a team, it doesn't mean you all have to agree with each other. But it does mean that you have to respect each other's roles and and be respectful of each other as people. So that's a really important piece.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they, I know they look, they look at that, they watch board meetings and then they look at the turnover on the board and central office and teacher turnover too. That also shows there's all those, it was fascinating, all those pieces.
It is. Okay. And we do have just till seven for this tonight, correct? You you folks have a long evening tonight. So how about if we jump and I just give you a few minutes to to touch on some of the areas where there is a lack of cohesiveness in your responses? And so if you have a something to write these down on, I wanted to just kind of mention to you a couple of the responses, because these don't show up on your ranking sheet. But a couple of the responses that showed a lot of lack of cohesiveness. So it might be one person says always, one says some of the time, one says, you know, almost never, and one says, I don't know. So here are the the numbers on that survey. Again, it would be the original report with the forty-two pages. And you may want to spend some time on these later, but the questions that had a lack of cohesiveness are eight, twelve, thirteen, twenty-one, thirty-six, forty-one, fifty-two, and sixty-seven.
Great.
So I'm going to pop you back out into another grouping of pairs. I'm just going to give you five minutes this time. And I apologize in advance, it will not be enough time, but it will hopefully be enough time to help get those, the conversation going. And we can go from there. So I'm going to change your time to five minutes and I'll pop you out to those groups right now. And you're back.
Hi.
We've left a huge four-minute timeframe to have this discussion. So I think what it'll do is just, um, maybe again, start with, um, breakout room one. And if you could just in a minute or so, talk about some of the highlights, um, that you talked about in terms of if there, where are these areas where you see some lack of board cohesiveness? And did you have a chance to talk about how, um, you, what opportunities you might have to increase that cohesiveness as a team? Who was on, uh, breakout room one? Let's see. I think I have the list. Was it Maya and Leah? Is that correct? Okay. Sorry. I called you out. Darn it.
Leah, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I thought we were two, but that's okay. Um, we talked about, um, on question eight about, uh, annual performance, um, reviews and that it may be good for us to start doing a performance audit, um, with some of the laws, the tools every year instead of every other year, just to make sure that we're on the right track. And then for question thirteen, um, we talked about, um, our decisions and if they were well-informed and, um, majority said never. And so the question came up that what is the reasoning behind never? Because I know that wasn't necessarily what I would have thought, but, um, why? And then what can we do?
Great. Thank you. Um, let's see, who was the next group? Was there a next group that would like to talk? Uh, let's see, I think we had Leslie, Leslie and, and Dr. Watts. Were you together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Amara, please.
Oh, boy. Well, we just were getting started on this, but just, and I'm just speaking personally, it just seemed like we were all over the board on a lot of these. We went through each one of them quickly and, and one of the things that jetted out at me is that people did this more on a personal opinion and that they needed more education. We all need in other, all of these areas to understand it better. And the more involved or the longer you've been there, perhaps you knew something or you, that was your area of expertise. So just covering it all better and, and having a better understanding of all of it. I just think it's an educational process, but you know, chime in, Dr. Watson.
No, absolutely. Thank you for that. We, I think, I think we went through and we're able to see, it's just fascinating. Tricia, as you mentioned, the rainbow, uh, effect. I, I think it, it would be a perfect opportunity for us to take what we've learned in this session and use this in future conversations, really, really getting to the root cause. Why do we believe, uh, the respondents responded in this way? And now that we know more, how might we respond going forward? To some of the same, same questions and, and really using this as a, a continuous improvement, cycle opportunity for us. Cause now we know, we know what the standards are, right? Now we just need to create our own expectations for ourselves.
Right, exactly. Did you all just hear my cat enter the room? He came in to say it's seven o'clock. So lastly, I want to make some time for Michelle and Denise.
Yeah. So I think we kind of came up with the same, we saw the commonalities around processes. A lot of it has to do with processes and, and, um, I think some of it is not knowing. Cause some of the things that were on there, it's like, well, we do have a process for that and we do have a process, but it's the, it's the not knowing um, of the newer board members and, and I can just speak to when I, you know, cause I was the, a new board member too, and, and my learning curve is very steep. Um, and I had the, you know, it was, um, you know, it's just one of those things where there's so much that you, you usually learn when you do. So it's like, oh, this is how, you know, Michelle talked about learning on Saturday. It's like, yeah, these, there are things that come up that just, you know, you, you can't have, you won't get everything. It's, there's just no way. And so, but, um, just understanding and, and asking questions, I think is, is huge and educating yourself. Kind of like Leslie said, I think is huge about it because, you know, that's unfortunately, I don't know that even whatever book that exists would not cover all of the, wouldn't cover, I wouldn't even think ten percent of the, you know, all of the things that, that happen within the scope of the work that we do. So.
Absolutely. Yeah. Uh, you know, you bring up asking good questions and, um, that's, it's a really important topic because one of the greatest powers of the board is asking the right question at the right time. And, um, you know, that, the, the asking of questions is where you gain deeper understanding as a team. And you also learn more about what's important to each other. Um, so you know, that, that the less surety about, I know what the answer is, and perhaps more humility in saying, I think I know something about this, but I might be missing something. So can you share with me more about this? Help me understand more about this. Or sometimes it's, what are the questions that we as a board should be asking about this? That can be, that can be a really telling question as well.
I so agree because, you know, I know that even after almost eight years, well, starting eighth year, uh, I'm still, there are still things that I'm learning, you know, I have to ask questions. I don't know the answer to it. And that humility is so important, you know, not always thinking you know the answers to everything.
And understand that the school district is very different than any other private enterprise. I mean, it, it's very different. It's very different.
And what you knew last week might be different this week, especially this year, for heaven's sakes. So, well, I so appreciate your time today. I hope that you'll, you know, this, this is a, a building block. It's not, it's not the end. It's the opportunity to take a look at what you've said about yourselves and, um, set some goals around what are the topics we really need to be talking with each other about? What are the things we need to prioritize in this most unusual year? To make sure that we take care of kids in the way that we want to. And maybe we have to give up a couple of things this year and they go back on the calendar next year. So, but I, I greatly appreciate your time. Are there any other questions? Before I let you go, I see that it's seven oh three and I want to be respectful of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you all get a break now to stand up and before you head on into the rest of your meeting. So, um, let's see, I may, am I the host right now? If I am, I.
You are. Will you change back over, please?
I should probably, uh, give you the power to change rather than, uh, dumping everyone out of the meeting. So let's see. Pam, do you want me to make you the host?
Please.
Okay. You are the host.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciated my time with you.
Thank you so much.
Again soon.
Yes. All right.
Do we want to take a five-minute break?
Tenth hour.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Five minutes, ten minutes? What, what do you think?
I don't think it will be too long, right? Under.
And just so you know, what, what Pam has sent to you, so we won't count this as the break. What Pam has sent to you is just, uh, re, uh, placed at the top of your inbox, the, uh, proposed, legislative commentary from, from staff.
Yeah.
And, uh, she will also be sharing those documents as needed. So we can talk about the process that we'll use for discussion. Uh, just wanted to make sure you knew that. If you didn't have it readily available. Okay? So five minutes? Back in seven, ten? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay. Alrighty. Okay.
I was wrong. My first meeting was at seven thirty this morning. So it's been.
Wow.
Too much.
Yeah.
It's all day long.
That's too much.
It's a lot.
I think that's one of the things with, yeah, the craziness of everything that's going on. Schedules are difficult.
All right, we're back, um, from our break and thank you, uh, for returning with all of us. Um, we just completed our WASD leadership training with Ms. Tricia Lubach, who we're, we're very fortunate to have that expertise tonight. We, we thank her very much for being here. So we're on to three point zero legislative priorities planning and, um, this is a discussion of the legislative priorities. The general session meeting at WASD, and I believe that's September twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. And Director Van Gerdoselen is going to be our vote at that, but she's also going to lead the discussion tonight on some of the legislative priorities. So take it away.
Oh, I know it said that I'm leading, but I think I'm just, uh, wanting to get input from board members and staff. Um, I know Director Bedinger had given me a list of priorities, fifteen priorities, but, um, uh, it appears that, um, staff members, thank you, Dr. Watts, for getting the information out to our communities and all five of them have responded back. And I think at this point, um, should we move forward in discussing their, uh, priorities and then I can compile it with what the board as a whole discusses and come up with our own, um, go from there. One of the things that I need to be clear is that, um, maybe a miscommunication with Dr. Watts, uh, but, uh, staff has looked at only the new policies. I believe there are seventeen, I'm not sure, uh, of the new policies and kind of looked at the priorities within their own community. But there are seventy-one, as you know, positions out there. Um, and so, uh, this, we still have some time till next Friday. And so after our discussion today, I can go back and see if there are anything else that staff members also would like to bring it up um, on their priority list as well as board members. So, Dr. Watts, if you can maybe guide us through what staff have put in.
Absolutely.
Do you mind? Okay.
No, I don't mind at all. I, I just wanted to make sure Pam and I spoke briefly and if it would be easier if uh, Pam could share the, the screen and we'll go.
Would you like to start alphabetically or, uh, to by community? How would you like to do that?
Uh, we can start from top to bottom. Let's start however they're listed.
Okay, uh, Danelle West is first. Let me pull that up.
Please.
So just to, I, I kind of on my sheet of priorities, I looked at everybody. All the five groups have pretty much all the same priorities. There's only one or two that they didn't match on. So if you pretty much look at Danelle, then you've looked at all, all of them. I think every group that I saw pretty much, so.
So Danelle's and, and school operations. So Israel's obviously some of those, uh, and, and I'll just, here's what I'll, what I'll do. Uh, it's just to review the, the process that we, uh, went through and that was simply A, to take a look at the, and again, this, I, I, I agree. Uh, my understanding was that we were looking at, at new proposals only. Obviously that was a misunderstanding. So we will certainly, uh, work with, with staff. So we will certainly work with, with staff and team. One, to take a look at, at the proposals, in this case, the new position proposals. Second, to align those proposals with the, the core work and core business of each respective community and/or teams that report to those community leads. To take a look at the proposals as listed, the number and the area in which they were, were focusing on, whether it was teaching and learning, HR, or a subset of HR, for example, professional development. And most importantly, what we've agreed upon was to, A, to provide an implication, basically a negative implication. So what would happen if this did not pass? What would the implication be for us as a school district? What does this mean for Kent School District proper? And second, a positive impact. If this passes, what are the advantages? And so each member took that guidance and populated the last page. So as you look at your pages, you will see the outline of the new proposals. Most importantly, the responses are at the, the latter pages of each one of those documents.
So, Dr. Watts, going back to what Director Bedinger said, would it, should we clarify then that these are listings that are grouped by communities? It's not necessarily that she has ranked them in any particular order, right?
So, and, and my, I did, I'm sorry, Director Vingadossalum, I didn't realize that they were only looking at new, cuz I, cuz they were, cuz, you know, I looked at seventy-one. So I didn't realize that. So I thought they all were listing the same ones, like they were all like, oh, these are the ones we want.
Right.
And I looked at the bottom and I thought, oh, at the bottom, it's the ones that they most want. So I didn't realize they only were looking at the new ones too, so I'm.
Okay.
That's alright.
Ignore what I said.
That's okay.
No problem.
So this is the start. And, and thank goodness, we do have some time. So if this is the best way, if we want to just use this time to review the comments for the new proposals, remember, that's, that's the, that was the ask. And so that is what the information that we have at this point. So how would, how would you like to, to proceed? Right now, Pam is sharing the screen.
Is there Danelle's comments?
Yes, for new proposals for teaching and learning. So that reads essentially, proposal for twenty-eight, addressing digital equity for, for all students in Washington State. That's a new proposal, number one. The negative implication that, that Danelle notes and team notes that, context to explain all that could occur academically or politically, or if proposal is not passed specifically, addressing digital equity for Washington students, a positive impact. And I think she, you know what? I think she did for, for both, same answer. For number thirty-six, transitional bilingual instructional program. The negative implication, she said, if it's not passed, we have a growing student population of English language learners. And if that is the case, they would lose necessary resources to support professional learning, to continue to prepare staff, most importantly, to support our students and the instructional resources within the program. So obviously, that would be a negative impact if this did not pass. Positive impact, if it did pass, is that it would increase access and the competency of staff who are teaching or providing the, in this case, research-based instructional supports. So that's a very high-level perspective.
So when we go up to, well, I mean, if we were to go physically there, then we would go up to the microphone and speak to this, but I, I don't know exactly how this is gonna go virtually. But we can, you know, speak to, I think, when you raise your hand or however way that works.
Right.
You would, we would talk about why this needs to be passed. So that context is really important coming from the team. I don't, at this point, do we, you know, obviously, we're not going to rank anything because.
Yeah.
Director Bedinger's way ahead. I apologize, I'm not as far ahead either. So I don't know how best to proceed, other than to just go over what staff has said is important.
I would agree. Just to give, this gives us context. Other questions?
Director Vingadossalum, help me, as I understood this, they're voting on priorities for WASD to present. Is that correct? Or have these already been agreed upon? And I, I don't understand why we're voting. Help me. I mean, this has been a while since I saw that and went over that. Is it, you're going there to vote on how the districts feel on these proposals? And then they're gonna take all of them that we vote in favor for? Or they're gonna take a top five? Or how's that gonna work?
Yeah, five to seven is, I think, what I understood, that they're going to take to the legislature, the top five, I believe. I can't remember now the number. Yeah, they'll prioritize from our fifteen to see what each school district has prioritized.
I was gonna say, it's from all of the districts, right? It's not just Kent. Right, so yeah.
So that doesn't come until the end. The beginning and throughout the days, people are presenting these proposals, you know, those who have brought it forward and they're going to hope to pass it this year, you know. Some are standing, like, standing proposals that have been presented before but didn't go through. And then the new proposals are gonna carry more weight, obviously, because it's, a lot of them are addressing COVID. And so I think that is gonna make a big difference. I have the numbers of legislative positions that the large caucus really focused in on. That's twenty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, thirty-one.
Thirty-two.
Yeah, twenty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, thirty-one, thirty, fifty-seven, thirty-two. That's us, yes. Thank you.
That is us.
Right, yeah.
Yes, and fifty-six is what the large caucus discussed. So a lot of them are COVID-related. And so, Dr. Watts, I didn't give that perspective to staff. So hopefully, they're in here and I'll check against it.
Yes, and we can circle back on that once you do and just fill in any, any holes that we need to or any information that's not, not there.
Okay.
Okay.
This is the first time I've ever really noticed this district doing this, so, right? This is the first time I've, I've observed this, so it's kind of, I think it's great that we're making this, you know, taking the time to do this and making it focus.
No, Director Bedinger, I appreciate your, your acknowledgement of that. This is the first time we've, we've done it, I think, to this degree. I, I will say that this, this is, we've had discussions about priorities. I've, I know in our previous iteration, I did attend with, I think it was AGDA Legislative Liaison at the time. And, and we did have some similar conversations. This is work that was very important for any district that understands that you have to have a seat at the table, right? And so, as the saying goes, if you don't have a seat at the table when decisions are made, you can end up on the menu. And that's what we don't want to, certainly want to avoid. I've, I've been in, in districts where districts actually had a lobby, lobbyists, you know, assigned by the, the organization. That's how important this work is. We don't have that. So we have to be our own lobbyists. And that's in the form of our legislative liaison. So it is, it's critically important. And I, I think it's something that we need to continue to do to this degree. So happy to bring this, this process forward and whatever process improvements that you'd like to, to see happen. Let's make sure we, we bring that up in discussion as well. Content is important.
Yeah, it's just the first time we're doing it, so it's, you know, it's, it's, we're just, we're just starting, kind of, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I, I really appreciate that staff took time to go through this. I mean, yeah, you're right. I don't, I think it's always been the legislative representative, which was AGDA, as far as I can remember, would speak with the superintendent, Dr. Vargas and Dr. Watts. And then kind of, she would ask the board. But as far as I can remember, I, I remember giving my priorities, but there wasn't really a robust discussion as a board and as a, as a superintendent board, governance team. So anyway, I really appreciate all your work too, as board members, to kind of prioritize this.
I'm, I'm wondering if WASD puts any weight on former conversations with legislators to see which one of these are realistic to get behind from their perspective? Or is there any part of that put into it?
Yeah, they're working behind the scenes. They're lobbying and on behalf of all the school districts, you know.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I mean, if I'm having a conversation with my legislator, I have a pretty good handle on, is this gonna have a chance or it doesn't have a chance? Or, you know, it's not gonna happen. So I was wondering if there was any input like that, that getting behind this is a pretty good chance, if we have all of us in favor, that our legislators are looking favorably on it already. And I'm wondering about that at all.
So where we might, where we might be able to triangulate that is, is in meetings that I know I'll be a part of or that, that were, you know, obviously, you know, WASD staff may have some insight. But there are individuals who are reporting to districts superintendent level meetings with the ESD. What I would, would imagine, once we determine what those priorities are, those are conversations that we could have with, with staff who either work with WASD or work for. Or you can speak to legislative officials you may have relationships with already.
Well, I mean, we're lucky to have in this district some seasoned, some seasoned legislatures that have a pretty good handle on that. I mean, in our house, even Deborah Inman is new. She's worked for Adam Smith for years, so she has a pretty good handle on that, so.
That's correct.
I think the point is, though, a lot of these are specific to COVID. And, and that's an immediate, an immediate need. And so I think that that's gonna hold. So even, cuz I understand what you're saying. Are there things that we put on the back burner in the past?
Yeah.
That may, but I honestly think that there are some things that are gonna have to be addressed with, with the situation that we're in right now. That's kind of some of the things I've heard. There's a lot of priority right now because we are not reaching. I mean, Seattle hasn't reached half of their kids, you know what I'm saying? So we've got some serious priorities that are.
Yeah, I hear you.
Are gonna be specific to, in my, that's kind of what I've heard, that are gonna be specific to where we are right now.
I would agree.
Well, will they be, the other question is, Vice President Daniels, will they be a priority to our legislatures? I mean, they may be a priority to school districts, but.
No, they're a priority to a lot of people, not just school districts.
Yeah, but I mean.
I think it carries, we carry a lot of weight when, you know, two hundred and ninety-five school districts. With the top fifteen and top five, that carries a lot of weight. You know, that's where I think individual, meeting with individual legislatures, I'm not so sure, is the right approach. And I haven't approached them because I would like to see that happen as a district, not so much as on a personal level, what we think is a priority.
Right, I agree.
So we're on the second one now? Are we on?
We can move to.
Let's go, Denise.
I think that would be good.
Guys, I'm not gonna lie, I'm exhausted. Well, you got my good.
Transition to the next.
So have you looked at this one enough? This is brand new. This is school and academic support. Yeah, so let me know when you want me to scroll down from here.
Okay.
Yeah, there's so many that are so important.
There's some on here that are bold and some that are regular. Are those ones that are more important?
Are you saying the type? No, I think, I think that, I think that's just bold to highlight it. The information is, yeah, there's, there's no meaning behind the bold.
Okay, so it's not like, oh, this is one I really want, okay.
I, I have a question, I have a question regarding this. Not that I'm not in favor, but, but, and I understand the challenges with COVID, but I'm wondering how changes in the high school graduation requirements, if that does go through, are we helping or are we hurting our kids that are being sent on to colleges? Are they giving that same level of grace when they enter the college system?
Well, the college system is impacted as well.
Absolutely.
So I mean, I think it's, I think all of it is. And it's just flexibility. So it's not necessarily, I mean, I think it's adaptive to whatever will be needed.
I mean, it's not gonna put them at a disadvantage academically, is what I'm trying to get at. I don't know, because I don't have a college student right now that would be going in. I don't know.
So here's, I can share with you what the conversation is that happened earlier with ESD superintendents and staff. We had conversations about the alignment of K-12 and post-secondary in Washington State and align that with K-12 school districts and, and post-secondary in California. What we learned is that the system in California is much more aligned to standards and expectations of students as they matriculate through secondary, high school, and on to, to post-secondary. They go to a state university. The alignment and readiness, it's, it's inherent in their system. In other words, there, it's designed for students to be successful, more successful, if they're transitioning within a public school district in California. We have different standards, even within our K-12 school districts. So to answer your question, it's, it's a yes and. It may be easier to be more successful graduating from high school and, and moving on to a California state school because they had that alignment. In Washington State, there might be more challenge depending on the school you go to. But here's what, what university professors and presidents are actually saying. And this is the ground truth. For those who've, who've even sat in one class on day one in college, it's not necessarily the same discussion when we move from third grade to fourth grade or fifth grade to sixth grade, where we say, okay, little Calvin is, is, is at least, he's at least knowledgeable enough in the basic skills readiness for fifth grade to be at least reasonably successful in the next grade level, because we have those standards. In college, the reality is, no matter who comes to us, once you're in, we start where you are. That's, that was the language. So it's not as if students are not prepared. The professors are actually starting where the students are. So that's an interesting concept, but it's actually, that was, that was what we heard from college presidents. We heard from professors. So do I think that it will impact to some extent? But I don't necessarily believe we're gonna see a incredible, you know, waterfall of, of students not graduating or not enrolling in post-secondary institutions because of COVID.
Ready for me to move down?
And, and not to belabor this, but I do think it's important for our kids that are going on for the rest of their life and their careers and their career path or whatever it's gonna be. But say you're going, well, it's probably not even gonna affect that. But I'm saying if you're going to some pretty demanding school academically, not even in the state. I don't know. I, I'm just saying, does that affect them being accepted there at all or anything like that?
Well, that's, again, that's a, that's a question we don't, don't know. It could. I mean, that, again, it's a yes and. These are about flexibility and graduation requirements. We also know that legislative officials, particularly governors, I know in at least two or three states have declined a waiver for, you know, the high-stakes assessments. And so.
Okay.
That's, that could impact some post-secondary decisions that are made based on where you live in, in the United States.
Well, mostly, these kids have been accepted before seniors, if these.
Right.
Okay, I got it. Enough said. Okay.
Thank you, Pam. This is student reentry, re-engagement, experiencing homelessness, those who are in, experiencing housing insecurity or foster care and the risks associated. I think what what this says to me more than anything is just if if there's anyone who understood that that what we're attempting to do in public education has so many challenges that are associated with it, it's it's proven right here.
Yes.
And and the reminder is, and and I say this all the time, let's stop using COVID as an excuse, because here's the question. We had these same challenges before COVID.
Yes, we did. It just wasn't as exposed. It wasn't exposed.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's the, that's real talk. And if we want to want to have that conversation, so now what are we going to do now that that we have this emergent need?
Yeah, some of these, like digital equity, I mean, that's not even a school district. School districts are not internet providers. So I mean, some of these things they're putting on the school district that are not even school district issues. So it's just, so, yes, it is. I I agree with you. It's, we're exposed now. So, yeah, it's quite interesting. I mean, safe water, that's not something the district should worry about. I mean, these things that are, they should not be school district issue.
I agree.
So it's just, yeah.
Yeah, so it is, it's the encroachment conversation, which happens every year. You know, we're asked as public school districts to do a lot for for so many, for the foreseeable future, but what it's feeling like is we're asked to do everything with nothing forever.
Right.
And that's, that's the ongoing challenge.
Right. Okay.
I love that, that there are examples provided and dollars, and I mean, there's nothing that is going to be strong upon, a strong case that can be made.
Right.
That information, thank you. Yeah, that comprehensive school safety historically has always been the very first priority. You know, every year comes up as the number one priority.
Yeah. Do you think it's as a result, though, of the, I mean, things, right? So that's the thing, this, we're always reactive.
Right, right. It's not fully funded, that is true.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the problem, yeah. Unfunded mandates.
So the declared emergency, is that declared by the district, I'm assuming? Yeah, if past districts would need to be able to.
Actually, that's different than the way it's described in the next one. So currently school district, so the next one talks about legal settlements.
Oh, 30 was brought by Federal Way, so.
What I'm saying, though, is on our next, so when organizational effectiveness, I'm I'm looking at the next set of.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just going by, Federal Way actually discussed this one. They were talking about reimbursement for costs and civil action liability. School, school boards can be personally liable, and so had something to do with board liabilities. I need to kind of look that up.
Yeah, because it doesn't say that on this one, right? It talks about, you had some addressing emergencies.
Yeah, there may be.
So like the mudslide, and also I think that was the, that was the, that's what they were talking about, the mudslide, and also that that was a declared emergency, but the districts ended up having to pay for a lot of that, a lot of the educational funding.
But there's a, there's a second part to it, because it's declared emergency and response liability. Right? So it's, so I think the response liability.
Where are you looking at?
The top, if you go to the top of it, number 30, it's described as declared emergency and response liability. So Pam, if you could scroll to the top of it.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, where?
You're good.
How much further up?
All the way up, all the way up.
All the way up.
Yeah, to where it describes the entire.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So you declare emergency, number 30 is declared emergency response liability.
Yeah, they did talk about that. There was school info, and it's pretty vague if we're in compliance with that. So they talked about both areas on that. And a lot of the money is taken from levy dollars, so they're seeking funding as a separate.
Okay.
Back down again?
Yes, thank you, sorry. So it's not just dealing with the emergency, it's dealing with the liability that could happen after the emergency. Okay.
Yeah, that is, that's that added dimension.
Okay.
And we're seeing that statewide and and nationwide.
Yeah, okay.
But also, you know, there's wildfires and things like that. I mean, I think other districts, maybe not in Washington, but in Oregon, are, might be dealing with that. You know, what they do if they lose, lose a building.
Yeah, I love that, that our district is looking at some of the similar things other districts are.
I love the idea of health centers. I just know it's not going to go there, but I love it. Community schools is something that I really think would be huge.
They have one in Spanaway.
This one, I, you know, it'd be interesting to kind of understand how things went at KPA with our health center there versus a full-blown school-based health clinic that was proposed for KM at one time. You know, we decided against it because of the enormous costs involved in that. So I guess I would be interested in hearing, you know, it doesn't talk about funding if past students will have barriers to learning removed. Does it talk about funding at the bottom?
I don't think so. This, what's been written here is just what, what Israel wrote, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, you know, we need to address funding.
Right, and these are the, and these are based on two questions essentially. What's the impact? What's the next, positive or negative? And so.
Right, got it. You aren't looking for analysis.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And this is where we start, right? So.
Yes, for sure.
Ready to move on to the next group?
Yes.
Thank you, Pam.
It has several of the same.
There may be duplications, there may be a different perspective. Again, these were areas that may have
Right.
blended into another area of responsibility.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of these.
Yeah, I think that's a good list. Is that under, where is that one under? Is that under organization?
And and they just, just noticed that they they numbered them like new number five or new number four instead of the main number that they have, which so.
And a 32.
Yeah.
You find, yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine, I'll catch it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to consolidate and.
Yeah.
And if there are any questions, we can work on what was interpreted? And what should be, if there are any questions, we'll on 20, we'll make sure we, you have that well before the 25th.
I know that no mid-year school budget cuts was one of mine, too, to, you know, for, for consistency.
That would be helpful.
I'll start that one.
Next group?
Thank you.
Are we ready to move forward?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Second, sorry.
This was under staff professional development.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
We're, we're essentially learning an entirely new way of instructing right now, and.
Yeah, you can see the patterns of COVID impact.
Yes.
As you said.
Well, maybe not so nice. So I think about, you know, you talk about no more snow days and how people feel about that.
That's what I, you know, be careful what you ask for, right?
But just thinking about, you know, the the ability of students to continue learning.
Absolutely.
Regardless of what happens and thinking about, I mean, even like, like, you know, some of the fires, right? I mean, thinking about and our kids can't, because I, I don't think, I hate to say it, it doesn't seem as though things get better year after year weather-wise or, so.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering too, with the COVID and teachers and emergency, like knowing if we need a substitute teacher and they could perhaps not get to the building, but they could do it remotely that day if everything was normal, too. The benefits of that, and and drawing maybe from a pool of teachers, because we're, everybody seems to be having trouble getting substitutes when they're back in a regular classroom. If we can draw from other areas, you know, I don't know. It it offers opportunities if we do this right.
Yes.
It does.
Next group?
You ready to move forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Last one.
Yep.
Were you able to see that? Okay, it's funny on my screen.
Yeah.
You can, you can, should be able to move it with the, the hand if you have access to shift. You can look. You're not able to?
I can't get it to move. I can't get the bar down here. Sorry, give me just a second more, see if I can. No, I can't get it to move over. I apologize. Hopefully you can see this okay from here.
Yeah. Yeah. It's fine. Yeah, that's interesting.
Yes.
Okay, I need some understanding on this. Somebody that knows more about this than I do, can, can they help me?
I've not seen the statement they're referring to.
When I wrote, when I went through this, this is, this was I think number five actually on there. How do we engage at present with tribal engagement to date within our area on educational matters was a question I had.
We have, we have a staff member whose position is designed to support our native indigenous students. But specifically, is that, was, was that the question you were? It sounded like you had a larger question as well about this, number 64, President Hamada? Maybe I just want to be clear.
It's, yeah, it's how do we engage at present with tribal engagement within our air, area on educational materials? I mean, how much?
There's a curriculum, so since time immemorial is a curriculum, that was, that is supposed to be being taught in every district. And so it was created by tribe, it's the tribe actually created the curriculum. So it it is supposed to be being taught, and I just say that because I know that there are places, I'm not saying you can't, but I know there are places where taught is loosely defined, but it's supposed to be in every being taught in the schools and.
School district.
I would, but I think it's mostly, it's middle and high school, right? I don't know if it is.
I don't know if it's elementary.
Yeah, so.
I'll have to check. I don't, I don't.
Curriculum, though, that is, that is supposed to be being taught. And there is a native ed coordinator in, in most districts that I know, there's Native American coordinator. I think the districts, I think part of the challenges, so I'll think, I'll talk about, like, I know Auburn has one of the highest populations of native kids, and so there's actually programs in a couple of our schools where we have teachers who specifically support our native students, but it's based on a partnership with the Muckel Street Tribe, and there's funding and all those things that that are provided. So that's a little bit different.
I know here we have like a parent group for the parents, and they get together and, you know, it's just from different tribes, it's not specific, like. So, and I know that was happening at Kent Phoenix Academy for a while, and it would be like a big potluck and and whatnot, but that's as much as I know about that in the district.
Yeah, I know we used to have a department afterwards, I mean, there is that, we used to have Teresa heading that up.
Yes.
I love Teresa, she's awesome.
Yes.
But I think she's in Auburn, right?
She's nowhere.
Who is it now?
Teresa Lockman.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's the question of where we're at on that.
Right.
You can find that out afterwards, let us know.
Appreciate that. Pam, would you also note that, and I have a my one-on-one with with Melissa tomorrow, this will add that to our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, and so this question is about larger, you know, it's, it's only pointing to native families and I think the question is, what about all, all students?
All students.
I'll take a look at it, the statement. Yeah, because I was going to say, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the statement that she's referring to. Because she talks about the position statement implies all native children in public schools are either in foster care or homeless. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, I'll double check that, yeah.
Thinking like, my kids are native, but they're not in either of those categories.
Yeah, no.
No, I just say it could imply that, and I don't know that, that which is different, doesn't necessarily mean that, but it could.
Right, so we can ask for an amendment. There is no amendment to the amendment this year, that's all I know. But there can be an amendment. So we can suggest that.
Okay.
All right. Yes.
That was the last one.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Welcome.
Thank you to everybody. I will try to consolidate that along with Director Benninger's information and.
And I would, I would say, for me personally, you know, it's like, I, the staff deals with a lot of these things every day, so if some of mine fall off to, because the staff has, you know, I see a lot of commonality, so I would want to see that represented. Because. Um, because, you know, they deal with the day-to-day aspects of it, so I would defer to that, you know.
Okay, sounds good.
That's, thank you for your work, absolutely, that's good.
And I'll send those priority ones that other districts talked about to you, Dr. Watts, so you can start with that.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Looking forward, I'm hoping this will be an annual thing that we do, you know?
Why don't, why don't we just say this is, so we can use what we learned today and say, if we can routinize this as a process, uh, I think this is, this is the, this is definitely the season, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and, yeah, and, and honestly, I, I like the, the spreadsheet, you know, and just that, that format of, um, you know, this is, you know, the way, the way the format was asked, the, the two questions to support why it was chosen, that that is helpful, too, I think. That would be, that would have been helpful for me, too, when I was looking at all of them.
Understood.
So, yeah.
Well, it gives us, it does give us a reason to think about why or why not, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much for doing that, appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
All right.
All right, we've got much more work to be done, but great work, uh, this evening, thank you, everyone, Pam, Board. Uh, it's been a long day, and a productive day, it has.
Denise, go to sleep.
Are you still with us, Denise?
I was gonna say.
Back to Jamison?
That's right.
No, but then, yeah, it's after tomorrow, I gotta take my son to college Friday, so there's a lot, I'm just thinking about this, my whole mind is just.
I understand.
Good stuff.
Congratulations, yes, congratulations, that's right, that's right.
Best wishes.
Right.
With that, I think we are adjourned.
You guys have a great night.
Thank you so much. All right, stay safe, be well.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.